Okay, roll call vote for attendance. Janet Cress here. Howard Hager.
Here.
Diane Jordan here. Todd McDaniel is absent. Chad Sargent.
Here.
Okay, we have a forum. Recognition of a happy room full with yes today?
Wow.
Yeah, alright. We meet once a month. Okay, are there any public comments to be addressed to the board according to the rules and procedures set forth in Hoachetown Resolution Number 10? Hearing none. We'll move on to the consent donkey. The following items are considered routine by the board's trustees and will be enacted with one motion, discussion desired upon any item, that item will be removed from the consent donkey and considered separately. Approval of the January 10th, 2024 regular meeting minutes, which is the first ad in your book, did everybody have a chance to go over those?
Yes.
Everybody good, or, yes.
I've read them all. I have two things I'd like to add to the claims list.
Okay.
That came in just yesterday.
Let's, let's do claims third.
Okay.
Okay? So, we're good with the January 10th meeting minutes? We're good with the January 24th special meeting minutes? Okay. Howard, you want to have a discussion on paying the claims?
I have two bills that came in from the newspaper, and they came in yesterday. There are about fifteen, and we add them to the claims list.
Is that going to be a problem for, um...
Charles.
Charles?
No.
Okay.
I'll just hand them to him, so we can add it to the claims list and go with it.
Okay, so we're going to move, um, two, two claims?
Two claims, one of them is for thirty of seventy, and the other one is for thirty and paid forty.
Okay, so add two claims for the approval, to approve the payment of claims. Is there any other discussion on those items? Hearing none, we have a motion to accept the consent donkey. Make a motion.
I second it.
Okay, roll call vote, all those in favor? Janet?
Yes.
Howard?
Yes.
Diane? Yes. Todd? Absent. Chad? Yes. I know we had some new people come in, will everybody sign in? Our, Howard, can you just kind of like roll that around? So we'll have a list of all of our guests, because we have to, you know, attach that term.
If you fill out the first claim, just click to the other one. Do have them signed.
Okay, item number seven, Treasurers' Report. Before we move to those items, do we want to jump ahead to new business? Item number eleven, any matter not known and when or could not have been recently foreseen prior to the time of the posting of the agenda? Um, I would like to have a discussion only with our evacuation plan that Don Cook has just kind of been able to put some great people together. If we could have ten minutes and listen to that? Is everybody good with that?
He just went outside.
He just disappeared.
Thank you. We can, we can move on, Tom, he's coming. You're late. Well, this one too comes back.
What's that?
Is, is he on the phone or something? Are we going with Treasurers' Report?
I still will.
Charles, are you ready for the treas?
Uh, yes, ma'am.
We'll let Charles go ahead and give the Treasurers' Report.
Sorry, I didn't have a call.
Okay. Oh, we're good now without you, Andy, you lost your space in line.
Hang on just a second, I need to try to...
Oh, then you're wrong.
Can you get that phone?
Thank you, sir.
What did it?
Alright, so, um...
Yeah?
Profit and loss. Uh, the total collected, um, was five hundred and sixty thousand, two hundred and forty-two sixty-one. And of that, uh, checks were two hundred and sixteen thousand, five hundred and ninety-two, rest was ACH payments. So, that's picked it up a little bit. And then below that, we have just a list of the expenses. And the total net income is five hundred and twenty-two thousand, five hundred and two dollars and thirty-one six. And then the balance sheet, um, has our current balance, money in the bank, forty, or two million, three hundred and ninety thousand, nine hundred and ninety-eight dollars, seventy-four cents. And bills payable right now, thirty-three thousand, eight hundred and fifty dollars and eighty-four cents. That's good for me.
Can I just want to make a part plan real quick? So those are coming in almost daily?
Yeah, we're clearing those there pretty much daily. We, we're getting a two-step system where people are going online and, uh, trust you, Chris, really, it's one of the top users who does a good job with that, uh, using it online. So that's the temporary system before it goes live. And then they go through the ACH appointment, and that's what you're seeing.
I've taken two phone calls on that today, um, so...
That will show you, it's about a month.
Yep.
The charge for it will go day by day, but that gives you about a month for, to show what our bank's doing.
Yeah. You know, January sixteen, 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 this, this is, this is great, we're getting there, we're getting the system in, so, good job.
We review, we review daily, uh, most payments, and then we sweep them into our...
He's selling up on coffee. Okay. Okay, that's great. Like I said, the phone calls I've gotten are all good, so, a little bit of transition, but...
It took a while.
Yeah, but it's, it's working, so, thanks for everybody who worked on that one. Okay, um, anything else on Treasurers' Report? Howard, are you good?
I'm good, my motion, I second it.
As we got the motion by Howard, we got a second by Chad. We have a roll call vote to accept the Treasurers' Report. Janet?
Yes.
Howard?
Yes.
Diane? Yes. Todd? Absent. Chad?
Yes.
Okay. Approved. Okay, back to item number eleven, new business. Um, we're going to let Don Cook have the floor, he's done, this is, he didn't just start this last week, y'all guys. He's been working on this for how many years?
Long time.
A long time, so, um...
Those of you that don't know me, Don Cook, uh, well, Comfor Forestry Services, um, how many years has he been living up?
Thirty-two.
There you go. That's why I wanted to hear. And he said that real slow.
Next thing he says, thirty, thirty-two.
For a long time, we've been working on if we have a, a wildland fire event that we have to evacuate folks with, out of the cabins, what a nightmare that's going to be. These two guys took the idea of doing that, and... Salted pretty much. I hope, uh, they, the, this program that they, they've put together is, to the best of my knowledge, there's nothing like it in the country. And I'll introduce Keith Markes and Chris Mask, he's our GIS specialist, and I'll turn it over to him, because he can explain it.
My name is Keith Markes, I'm the communications and administrative manager of the OFS, and, as you mentioned, it's, you know, we've seen what's happened with these wildland fire events in other parts of the country that are similar to this, where we have people coming in, vacationers, renting, and, and it's been a problem. What we wanted to do is kind of approach it from two angles. Targeted toward cabin owners, property owners, and then their guests. For the owners, it's more of a prevention type of thing. Here's the things that you can do to make your property more secure, less likely to, should the other thing happen, catch on. Um, and then for the people who are standing here, the guests, to be able to evacuate effectively. So what we did, and, and this is still very much a work in progress, there'll be more added to it, we're going to have how-to videos ideally, all that, but there's a website, and it has just recently gone live, it's at safestayokay, S-A-F-E-N, S-T-A-Y, okay, dot org. Dot com, dot net, dot gov, should all eventually get you there as well, so we have those, we're just trying to get around.
Will you give us that one more time, please?
Sure, safestay.org.
Okay.
Now you says, you said safestayokay.
Yeah, safestayokay.org, I'm sorry.
Safe, safestay.
Okay.
Okay, dot org. There we go.
Alright, and, uh, yeah, so, right, and you pull it up on your phone, I'm trying to get it idealized for mobile devices, because that's how most people will actually access it. And the, the idea behind it was to make it where it can load quickly even if cell coverage is spotty, or, and you don't have access to wifi. So there's not a whole lot of graphics, there's not a whole lot of fancy things on there that would keep it from loading quick, because we understand that, you know, why we try and get a QR code out there that people can take a picture of and be prepared, not everybody will do that, and it might, you know, be a last minute type of thing. This should still work ideally in that situation as well. Bring up the site, click on the button that is geared toward evacuation, and that'll take you to what Chris has worked on, which is the GIS mapping software that will allow anybody who gets in there to push the button, and it will locate them using the, the cell technology, and will know where they are, and they can pull up maps that are good for where they are, that shows them the different routes in and out, they're color-coded. Say, for example, if you have emergency equipment coming in on the red route, you don't want people evacuating on the red route, you want them going out on the blue route or the green route. This will be folded in with, it's called iPOS, I'm sure some of you are probably familiar with that, it's the system that is used in the case of, say, an Amber Alert, if your phone's ever gone off for an Amber Alert, that's GeoFence, those can be sent to just specific areas. So, anybody in the area around here where that is can get, it, it doesn't matter if they live here or not, if their device is on and they're in that area, it will hit their phone and let them know, and it will also, these messages will have instructions on which route they would take to evacuate, blue route, red route, green route. So, the whole idea is to make it very intuitive, just user-friendly for anybody that can do it, and very easy to get to, very easy to load, it's all built around being very user-friendly and fast, because if we get to the point where evacuation is important, that's obviously, you know, we can't have a lot of heaven and honey, and got to get people moving out calmly and as calmly as possible.
Well, that'd be great information to put on, you know, the twenty thousand reservation contacts that come in every week or whatever.
Sure, and to that end, there will, uh, the publication that goes out to the cabins that is in there, there's a full page ad in there, with our QR code on that. And we're hopefully going to have refrigerator magnets, stickers, window clings, all those things that, whatever a specific cabin owner wants to use, that works for them. If they want, oh, great, if they just, you know, just want a window cling, great. We, we think that people will be pretty receptive to this, because it's obvious for the common good. And, um, those QR codes will be there, it's for people, you know, you can just pull your phone up to, it'll pull the website right up, load quickly, and take you, you've got the two buttons, she has it pulled up, I think, and you, you just jump in there. And it's, it's live now, it's been live, I think, I turned it on about a week ago, uh, because we don't really know when the ad will hit, so I just, it's there now, and, uh, it's been, you know, in the development state for over a year now. But it's out there now for everybody to, to access, and if you want to start spreading the word on it, so much better. And that's kind of the long and short of it, I don't want to, I know you got a lot of important stuff to cover there, I don't want to take a lot of your time, but I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. Chris, did you want to add something?
What's your...
The map changes every day?
What's your boundary, what's your boundary line on?
It's the whole area.
When you say area, is it just city limits, or...
The whole thing, from Mount Fork River to...
Oh, wow, okay.
To Smithville. There's not any routes down there or up there, but all the routes are right here, but...
And all those routes are not gated by a warehouse or...
Yes, they're all over.
And...
The, the routes, the routes that are on here, now the Eclipse routes, that's, that's all over the deal, but this is just the, the evacuation routes that are signed in Hoachetown, those are, are, they, they match the map color-wise.
Is there eventually going to be like signage, you know, these really nice little evacuation signs?
Mm-hmm, that'd be nice.
We would love to do that.
Love to. We just, you know, as soon as we can do that, we'll do it, you know, yeah, absolutely. That, that's one of the things, is raising awareness as high as we can get it is going to obviously be key to this, and as Don alluded to, this is, yes, the only initiative like this we know in the country, and hopefully it can be scaled up to other places, it, well, I mean, I, it, it can be. When I was going through this and figuring out how to lay it all out, it can be scaled up to other areas, and then if our partners in other states, we, we partner in some group of thirteen large states, and then on a national level with other forestry divisions across the country, if any of them want to use it, they're welcome to anything that we have to...
So who put this...
I'll start right here.
Who put the evacuation signs up, lock-off shooter bear? Who uses all those?
I do.
So if you're, those are all, they're developed. And, and that's a Cody, the question that Cody just asked, uh, those signs, the signs that are up right now, that, that's twenty thousand dollars worth of signs. And we're working, working right now on getting a grant for another fifty thousand dollars worth. And my plan is to have evacuation routes from Crest Road to Timbuktu or...
Literally Timbuktu.
Uh, and have, have those routes, and, and as we get those routes laid out and signed, then I'll talk to Chris, and he can upload them to this.
As new, new, new roads are added, those will be put in, not real time, but really close to, it'll be, um, it'll be a constant effort in motion as this happens, so we know how fast things are going at here. Don keeps us apprised, you know, on the city all the time, and, you know, we're down here recently, we have, we're down here, and so we...
So does this, so, does this seem like, uh, so you've got evacuation route that goes across a low water bridge, and we've had torrential rain, things flooded, does it close off that route?
It will, it will, will show up in a notification.
The iPOS.
That's the plan, that's the plan. When, when we get those notifications lined out, it will say, don't use the green route, or whatever route it is built through.
Those are crafted as, for e, there's, they're not just templates that are hit or that go, these are done by somebody just for, and they're, they're...
Say we have to fire the rest of, of, uh, Camp Pratero, and we need to notify Pine Hill and, and Lost Creek, that they, everybody there needs to evacuate. Whoever the IC is will make that call, what needs to be evacuated, what routes to play, we'll call Keith or Chris or whoever it is that we need to call, they'll put that notification out, and, I mean, it happens, it's step-by-step.
Once, once that whole process is activated, emergency management is involved in it, and uh, there's a lot of people that come to the table very quickly to get that all rolling, and it can be done, what it is done on is a case-by-case basis, as needed, where it's needed, hyper-focused, like you, like I said, the incident commander will say, here's where we're focused, where we got, and, and there'll be a whole crew of these level up on that, and so it's just a very quick-moving, fast updated, everybody's on deck, actually.
Yeah, this is, this is fabulous, and, you know, I mean, we write letters of support, and I was meeting with, um, Tim Trummans rep this morning, you know, what kind of grace do we want? We're glad you're here today, we'll keep talking...
Absolutely.
So that we can work together on this.
Absolutely, we are at your disposal for whatever you need, we, we are really excited to be a part of this, and...
Well, we're excited to have somebody that knows where the roads go, so, I mean...
And that's part of the really great thing about the GIS software, too, is that, I could show you on my phone, there's like seven GIS apps, and so it's very comprehensive. So, the GIS map that you will see attached to the website, it's all integrated with all these other applications, and that's the same platform that is used to where we send personnel to fight the fire, that they will use to say where we're sending people to evacuate, it's all one whole product that is used together, and so there's no, there's no scenes for everybody to trip over, it's very smooth and integrated, really good stuff.
That's amazing, well, I mean, Don certainly knows how to get hold of us, and Cody certainly knows how to get a...
Well, I'll leave you all with my card, and so you'll have my cell number, and you can get in touch with me.
And we're not afraid of you, could be.
I'm available around the clock, it's, it's written in my job description, I'm twenty-four seven, three sixty-five.
What's your full name and title again?
He's taking his card.
I have cards, and I will actually have them, and, uh, my cell number is on there, and we'll have...
So how long will it take you guys to do it?
Chad is our secretary today.
Uh... I've been working on it for over a year, and I don't know how long Chris has took him, but it's about that same amount of time. And his is harder than mine, so, he's really the, the very highly skilled fellow.
And I've been working on it half my damn life.
And then the road's...
At least, right, Chris and I have been with the agency, uh, slightly less than thirty-two years, and, um, but when we, we both came around at the same time, when we heard about what we'll get, I think this is something we can absolutely do, and it's a worthy project, so let's do it.
Well, it'd be so great to not be...
With the help from Don and everybody down here, it was great.
You know, it would be great not to be the Paradise, California, or not to be the Gatlinburg, or two, you know?
I wasn't going to say those.
You know, but now that we have to.
Right, and that, that's what we don't want.
If we learned, if we didn't learn anything from watching that...
Right, that's what we don't want, is a Gatlinburg, and so that is why it is important to do this, and that's why we jumped in, we're both thinking really want to get it done.
I think you're going to find that the town is going to be very supportive, our cabin owners are going to be very supportive, uh, this will be something that we can keep talking about, for sure.
Yes, oh, absolutely.
You know, well, thanks for taking the time to come in today, and Don.
And, and this, this is going to be used statewide, but it was all, the groundwork was there.
Have you got, have you done any, um, I mean, I'm sure you have, but have you done many trials on it to see if it's functioning?
When, when they got it put together, I, I took it, and everywhere that I went using US Cellular and AT&amp;T service, it worked about a, about a year.
It's right, Chad, it's right behind you, so as a resident, if you push evacuation map right there, pulls up the GIS system, and then it finds their exact location.
Right.
So, and, like I said, we're right here, so if you click on that blue, it kind of gives you more details.
And then those PDFs have, uh, masks, you know?
That's the cabinet.
That's good stuff.
Is there an opening for these?
Of all the cabins and cabin names?
For future votes.
They'll show up on that mask.
Wow.
Is there not any addition?
It's really, what is there, what is happening?
Yeah, well, and, and, that's, that's going to tax you.
Whatever they're determining, and our partners, whatever.
They might know it. Or what subdivision or anything like that.
So I think for the trustees, what we want to do is, I mean, thank you, thank you, thank you for coming and introducing this to us, and then we want to set up some more meeting time...
Sure.
As a work session.
Absolutely.
You know, so we'll get with Don and Cody, and, you know, whatever you want.
One hundred percent.
All right?
We've got to work, we've got to work on the list for, to put in cabins that starts with, for emergencies, dial nine-one-one, for, uh, you see a bear, dial this number, evacuation, here's the plan, I mean, we've got to have a whole list, and the problem is, uh, refrigerator magnets don't work anymore.
Yeah.
But their cell phones, now they want those cell phones.
That's one of the stickers in the window clings, too, and whatever else we can think of. The other day, I was like, hey, you know what every cabin has in it? Coasters. We could get the QR code burned into coasters.
Mm-hmm, you never know.
If they're really nice wooden coasters, maybe they'll put them in there, and some, some of them, some won't, but, you know, so, hey, if, if you have any great ideas like that, I'm listening.
Yeah, we're always open to ideas.
There, there's no bad ideas, send them our way.
I don't think we need a motion on this, this is just discussion only, yeah, this is new business?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Looking forward to working with you.
Definitely going to be working with you. Okay, we're going to go back to, that way firefighters needed to chase that truck that was going by, we didn't want them to stay here. So, Treasurers' Report, if I had to, item number eight on the agenda, yeah? Yeah, you want to do all new business now?
Two minutes and, and they're done.
Yeah, okay, stay on.
And no.
Got Cody and Janet to finish with their side presentation.
We're good.
Okay, uh, we're going to tell you to finish new business.
Uh, it's right on the agenda, and, and I just want to throw it out there for, for the board to consider, to start thinking about, we're in the process of trying to hire two people. We have no desks, we have no chairs, we have no method. We need, you know, where are we going to set them up, what are we going to do, start talking about where we're actually going to set our office up?
Can we wait till they have some input on that?
Maybe, but, desk and chairs in this room upstairs.
I don't know if y'all, for me, are turning those portable things, you know, start kind of sharing us around and looking at some of the possibilities, this is stuff that can be moved on later on, but anyway, just wanted to bring it up.
Okay.
Okay, I'm done.
Office furniture. We need, we need town hall and office furniture, so, okay, good. Um, well, while we're on new business, I'm waiting for a report from Liz, but until we get that from her, we've been asked to submit a letter of support to ODOT for the sidewalks and pedestrian areas of the ODOT project. Do we want to have a motion to submit that letter of support?
Have we seen what that is, I mean, do we know, have we seen them out, or what that is, or what, what they...
The, the, the grant is to make that.
To make, okay.
Yes, it's just a, it's just a, a report for them to write a grant.
Oh, okay.
To present the...
Oh, right.
For them to create a project.
Oh, yeah, I'm, you know, yeah, my motion is...
That's a consideration.
Okay, so we're going to make a motion, Chad, to submit a letter of support to ODOT for a grant application.
Yes, just make a, make a motion to submit a, um, support letter to ODOT for the, um...
Grant application.
For the grant.
This is a federal grant. It's number eleven, most page, under new business. I second it. Okay, Janet's going to second that? Okay, roll call vote to submit a letter of support to ODOT for their federal grant application for the Hoachetown sidewalks, pedestrian, and transportation improvement. Janet? Janet, Chris, yes, Howard Hager.
Yes, you have it, yeah.
And Jordan from yes, Todd, absent Chad. I'll send you a copy below. We're not using that board of y'all, but today we're trying to do it. Okay, item number eight, discussion only regarding a monthly update on my services, we have to hear my survey.
Eric, trustees, uh, just real quick, I did send you an email about the command, we use it for in depth, so we'll go through that. The most important point is we're trying to go live March first, so early March, I would say is gonna be the go live date where everything's done online for lodging taxes. Um, as we discussed earlier, with the financial report, things are picking up on the existing system, but that will be rolled into the new system. Letters did go out last week, uh, and so you may be getting calls or emails. Uh, we'll have to help answer that, but they should also have, have a news contact in those letters. Uh, mayor noticed some people get multiple letters, depending if they have multiple addresses. Uh, so, but the, it basically explains the new system and, um, those letters started going out, at least six hundred of them gone out to date. They're only going out to people they have a hundred percent confidence in that that's the owner of the cabin. So they're still adding every week, adding letters, so it's gonna be a rollout through the next few weeks. Um, every week's probably gonna be another hundred or two that will be sent out off of the original, uh, as they confirm them. And so we're gonna.
Are they gonna take over the phones?
They will take over the phones, I think about lodging tax problems.
I've already sent it over to the boss.
Yeah, yeah.
So, but I'm counting the town halls, so what number they going to?
One eight hundred, call Georgia, or, okay, whatever the number is.
Oh, we got one.
Yeah, they have their own phone number, uh, there's a no contact button on the website, once it goes live. Uh, the emails we're getting is we, the second part of that update is the, uh, hochi-town.gov email has an info that is also coming to us, that we send that, typically I've been answering those, and I still do, but I also copy them because we're confirming the data on some of those people that, that have contacted, make sure it's accurate. So they're already eating the loop right now, uh, but that, that's all picking up. And, uh, again, hopefully by the first part of March, it's just fully on, online. So in the right direction, things are looking good, they've identified the properties and continue to identify properties. Um, so any, any questions on, on that?
Uh, yeah, the, the target, February twenty-ninth, the target date of the training. And, uh, you, I think we talked about this before and we just never get, come to the final decision. Are all the trustees gonna have access to the portal to look at, at that information from Avenue? Or are we gonna limit that to myself and Charles, or what are we gonna do there?
There's multiple. Yeah, I'm sorry.
Go ahead. And I'm just trying to figure out when we gonna get it on Charles' computer, mine, or whoever, you know, uh, uh, time administrator, wherever that may be.
Sure, there's gonna be multiple steps in this, one is, I think you were addressing specifically the financial side.
Yeah.
Natural collections and that clearly should go to the treasurer and, and, and the city manager, city administrator, when you hire them. So obviously there's a lot of information that's confidential, so I don't think every trustee or a lot of people have access. Uh, then there's actual, the, the database, they'll be reporting, there'll be, and I think it's yet to be decided how often you wanna see reporting. Uh, my best guess at this point would be monthly reporting for each trustee meeting. They'll have a full report of previous month's activity, issues, collections, people not paying, all those things. I think will be rolled into a monthly report, but we'll, we'll figure out what works for you all. Uh, that's very, it's variable, we can pretty much set it up any one who needs to. Uh, we do have right now calls with Avenue two to three times a week and that's sort of reviewing and talking about this. In concert with that, you also received a very rough draft of the short-term rental ordinance, um, this morning. Uh, this is something that if you have any input on, uh, we're, it's not critical to get it done like this week or next week, but it would be good to have it in place prior to going to live, because you will have the annual registration and the things that go along with that. Uh, because there will be a database of what people will fill out when they're registering their, their short-term, uh, rental. Um, but again, I think we have probably the next thirty days, we will need to get that pinned down. So any input you have on that short-term rental ordinance we discussed at the last work session we had, uh, please send that and make sure the attorneys look at it and, and make it the way you need to make it.
Will you put that in the notes with the STR ordinance, you know, for the March?
Okay.
Got you, bring the discussion for item number eight, it'll help us make sure we get that put in there. Mayor and Liz and I did go over all of that yesterday and Liz went that through legal versus the ordinances that we have to make sure everything kinda matched up, so I think that got taken over.
Yeah, we have to really discuss the life fees and what they are, because those will be built into the system that goes live. And so we need to make sure that those numbers meet your ordinances that you already passed.
And we do have a, um, permit sub fees committee to, to work on that.
Is this, this STR, uh, is this like, have you compared it to like Colorado or Florida or whatever? Because I'm still like, you know, got this little big economy cabin that rent for two hundred and fifty dollars a night and doesn't rent well, but I gotta pay the same fee as his six bedroom that makes him millions of dollars a year, you know?
Yeah, that's, again, that's going to be trustee decisions, uh, but, uh, yeah, we compared San Antonio, Waco, the many cities around the country. Most town ordinances are much more restrictive, uh, much more in-depth than what you're looking at right now. And the reason being is direction we got from you, that you are very short-term rental friendly, you wanna make it as easy as possible. Uh, the annual, there, there's two fees being proposed today and again, open for discussion, open for your comments. One is the actual annual registration renewal fee of two twenty-five. That number was brought up as a, um, covering the town's cost to administer a rental support. And it's really a break even number, uh, based on, uh, many things, including the contract with Avenue. Uh, the other portion of that is a one-time only, uh, setup and regist, not, I don't wanna call it registration fee, but it's really a setup fee. Uh, that, uh, again, it's gonna be up to what we set right now, the number, that, that seems to make sense, it's three hundred, it's a one-time fee. Uh, what we're suggesting and recommending is that you waive this fee for existing if they are registered by July first and if they're occurring on all sales tax and lodging taxes. So if it's a big undertaking to get the system replaced, it's gonna be registered. I think a more important goals could ever be registered, uh, then collect a fee for it. And I think that would be one method to do that is, uh, registration by July first would waive that setup fee. Again, strictly up to the trustees to decide, but that, that's kind of how we're bringing it out today. Uh, again, it's, it's for how that would work in the future, somebody builds a new cabin, that, that fee would apply. Somebody sells a cabin and the buyer would have to get set up again, that would apply. But you have so many cabins today, your intent is not that it's a money maker, you're really trying to bring public safety and, 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 uh, services to all the existing cabins by getting them registered and knowing who they are, where they are, and, and making sure that they meet your guidelines. Uh, but again, that's for discussion, it's up to you, uh, however you wanna handle that. But that, that seems to have taken into account the existing cabin owners, where they can bypass the, the setup fee if they get registered on time and if they make sure they're current on the lodging tax.
Okay, because that's a big deal for us, I think it'd be good to have our, um, permit sub fees committee spend some good time on that.
Maybe we meet a couple, week or two, that's really better.
That's what I said.
This is coming online really quickly and, and so, you know, happy to set that up, I'll work on that and, and get them together and, uh, run this by them. Uh, if you all have individual comments, please don't reply all of a sudden to me and we'll get the attorneys and we'll, you know, the different groups looking at this. But again, by purposefully, this is a very small document, very simple, uh, because I think Ho Chi Minh is open for business, for tourism and you wanna make it simple, but yet as we heard earlier, for public safety and get all the things in place.
Good, okay.
And then, then I think, uh, I did attend January eleventh, the Select Oklahoma Business Partners in North Texas, so I talked a little bit about Ho Chi Minh. I talked to the mayor about that, that was a big group and, uh, so that, that's, I think, uh, we start shifting a little bit over some economic development for Ho Chi Minh. There's a lot of interest in development out here besides just the cabins and I think that's, uh, something we could pick up on. And lastly, I think everybody's email's working, right? Uh, the only person.
Helen?
Helen is the only person that's not, yeah.
Okay.
That is, that, and hopefully that's.
She gets the pass.
Yeah, yeah, we tried and we really had a little hiccup, but we'll get that, but, uh, so hochi-town.gov is live forever trustee. Uh, I've noticed they're not, uh, on the website, so it's more of a question for you all, we want your emails on the website?
No.
No?
I think we, we have.
We have the info, we have the info on that.
Yeah, that's what I said, we've got a way for people to contact us and then it goes to the right person, so I think that's the way to do it.
And then, uh, that's all I have there.
What was it, some, the seminar you went to?
It's called the Select Oklahoma Business Partners, they hold an annual event in North Texas. It's basically a roadshow for economic development for Oklahoma, the town government was there, Chalka Nation, some of our contacts were there.
Okay.
Uh, it was very well done, very professional, uh, and it's, uh, for site selectors, brokers, investors. Uh, and so a lot of cities had a presence there, but so I, I spoke for us and just, uh, networked a little bit and, and talked a little bit about the tourism up here.
Was that Oklahoma City?
No.
No, it was in North Texas, it was actually, it was also in Dallas.
Oh, wow.
Yeah, 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 and they do it anyway.
Nice hotel.
Yeah, yeah, so in the next year, somebody else is gonna go out there.
Yeah, sure.
Yeah, and work well.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Okay, item number nine, discussion consideration, possible action regarding providing funding for sanitation needs during the cleanup after the summer eclipse event of April the eighth, twenty twenty-four. Mrs. Cress.
Uh-oh. Uh, we have, right now have twenty-five porta potties reserved, uh, and we, but I just, uh, charity, I talked to charity yesterday and I didn't know, but the state park has porta potties reserved also for Stevens Gap Road and Carson Creek Road, because that was part of, but we left before.
I just saw it, yeah.
Yeah, so, uh, I'd like to have it kind of like, you know, maximum, but I mean, twenty-five, we may only need twelve if we haven't helped from, uh.
I'd rather have twenty-five and not need them.
Okay, I'll take it.
I mean, I, I think it's a small price to pay for health and sanitation.
The next part of that then will be to kind of figure out where we wanna put them, you know, like Scott will put one on your property.
So this is the reason I've come today, because I don't know, I may, I kinda think it's like Y two K, remember Y two K, like buying property? So I guess y'all figured this out, I, I don't know, why do you think all these people are coming here?
It's the only county in the state that this total eclipse will be happening.
Okay.
And, I mean, you should just Google, so it flips twenty twenty-four.
I did, I seen the strip like from Austin, Texas all the way there.
Part of the problem there, uh, is Monday's gonna be your biggest day. Monday's gonna be total gridlock, no one can move type situation, mainly because Arkansas has been advertising like crazy, Paris, Texas is advertising like crazy, Toto's advertising, everybody around us is advertising. How do they get home? They have to drive through Broken Bow, you know? Through D, from D Queen to Indian Nation Turnpike, from here to Paris. I mean, we, we, people could be in gridlock.
How long do you think this will last? One day?
Uh, they're saying four to eight days, depending on, because people are probably gonna come in on the weekend for the Monday event and then find out that they can't leave on Tuesday, because there's no gas, no food.
It could, the total gridlock thing could last Monday and Tuesday. Now, the other days, it's like, uh, Friday arrival, when, you know, we're used to a Friday arrival when it takes an hour to get to your cabin. It can take three hours to get to your cabin, but it's not gonna be gridlocked, okay? And the whole deal is prepare for the worst, hope for the best. And I have to hand it to Cody McDaniels and that emergency management team, they are on it.
So everybody's prepared to, everybody's getting ready for this clip too.
Right, yes. Here's the other thing on this, so think about when we have these car wrecks on two fifty-nine and the traffic is jammed for three hours. They need to come, whose rescue do they come looking for? So when they're there for twelve hours or twenty-four hours, I mean, usually those are only three hours or four hours at most where we have that traffic stuck. But think about what it's gonna be like when it's twelve hours. You're gonna want a toilet in your parking lot.
And, uh, the sheriff is already, the, the sheriff's department has already announced in one of our meetings that if, when they have an accident on the highway, they're gonna short-term some of their mandatory things that they have to do. Out, move.
Show them where they're running to come on.
So, and we will have motorcycle cops, be able to move in and out of traffic, so it's a big deal.
I, I'll go ahead and order extra food and beer.
The deal is, your biggest thing is Monday, how to get people home, they're not gonna be able to go home.
So I got man scheduled that week here too, I mean, I don't.
They may not be able to go home. Uh, Monday, Monday's the biggest day you have to worry about, you don't, I don't think you really need to worry about the other days.
So the, the weekend's gonna be busy.
Yeah.
Cause you got all the people coming in and then Monday's gonna be hard to get home.
Monday's probably gonna be impossible to get home.
And they still wanna eat and drink beer.
I'm ordering beer, I'm not shy.
But you can't get your sky home like that.
Now Janet, have we, have we seen, um, have we seen cabins growing up for the weekend?
Well, right now, uh, we've done kind of a, uh, call, you know, check with cabin operators and we're probably overall at about sixty percent.
Walking distance.
I figure we'll get to about sixty, I figure we'll get to about eighty percent. I don't think we'll have a full house, cause the opportunity to really book this was April last year. That's when, boom, my books were full and a lot of operators were like that, now what's happening?
We're only seeing sixty and you're estimating eighty percent, what are we averaging on the weekend up here anyway? If it ends in eclipse, what, what is that average?
What's changed?
Well, this isn't just, this is people camping on the side of the road, uh, pitching tents, staying in your farm, on their land. I mean, we're talking not just our cabin business, I mean, we're talking dough or trickle it with people that are slicker on the side of the road. Sleeping in their cars and stuff like that.
Have we had, have we had an event like this in the past? So we don't really know.
But what we do know is that other towns and particularly small towns have experienced these types of events, including specifically eclipses. And there's lots of research about what happened and what they said is, we ran out of food, we ran out of water, all the gas stations were out of gas because the tankers couldn't kind of fill up, the restaurants were out of food because the food trucks couldn't get to them. We're just listening to what these people have told us happened in their small town and that's why we're ordering all the porta potties we can and all the food and all the beverage and planning on.
Drop one off in my parking lot if you need to.
We will, so I'll get, uh, I kinda need to.
We're, we're, we're talking, you know, trying to take care of Ho Chi Minh or, or this area up here, you know?
Communist area.
So if you've got, if you've got twenty-five porta potties, how big of a stretch from, from, are you talking just the south end of our, from, from city limits to city limits? Or are you talking from Crest Road to Teasley Land or, or Danny Hill? I mean, how far, how far do you wanna spread these porta potties?
The next thing here is Ho Chi Minh Beautiful and given a, uh, basically a donation so that we pick up after it's over. And we picked up from Sweet Home Road all the way to Stevens Road and we'll have this disaster all the way up to Carter Mountain. So, so that's something that we've gotta decide, whether to limit some of these and also gotta get a part.
Let's take these in order on our achievement. So do you have your funding, which is in your eclipse camp? I think we need a motion to accept that.
Okay.
The, for the.
For the porta potties, it's the last page in your packet.
Put this as the last tab.
Yeah, the last tab. Just Janet needs to be able to get that.
So it's.
We don't have a chance to read that, do we have a motion to accept the onsite sanitation?
So Stevens Road is a store and all that's on?
Not necessarily.
That's what it says.
It, it says that's.
No, we can revise.
Howard?
Can we do the onsite sanitation, cause that needs to actually happen before we go to Janet's Ho Chi Minh Beautiful? Can we review the onsite sanitation, cause that needs to actually have a motion before we go to Janet's Ho Chi Minh Beautiful? Do we have a motion to approve onsite sanitation for porta jocks during the eclipse?
Make a motion, do the twenty five minutes.
Okay, Howard makes a motion, do we have a second?
No second.
Chad's gonna second, may have a roll call vote to accept porta potties.
Yes, Janet.
Yes, Howard?
Yes.
Diane, yes, Todd, absent Chad.
Yes.
Motion approved, you have a motion?
Cool, okay, thank you.
Thank you, Janet, for organizing and to help the environment for April the eighth.
Mayor, um, so I'll point out to you that you uh asked for analytics on eclipses from Avenue. They started that process to be used, so maybe Janet, you and Janet can get on and do some guidance, cause it looked pretty good actually.
Well, that's one of the things that we did wanna do, is we've got, you know, different data points of how many cabins are booked, and Janet's been going through operators, making phone calls with who she knows, we'd use some other data sets so that we can kind of compare, so yeah.
I think you'd like what they came up with today, maybe you could compare it to what you're.
That'd be good, put those together.
And then the next one, uh, can we do it?
Yeah.
Is the cleanup after the fact. Uh, and this cleanup, uh, I was, I was talking to Charity O'Donnell again, uh, just yesterday, I was talking about uh, seeing if we can get with the pending tons and maybe get some trash cans lined up on the highway, if that would help. We hope it will, because cleanup could be pretty bad, you know? If you got a little bathroom, you got a little bathroom, even though that thing's not right there. So, and uh, so I'm asking for money basically, uh, for the town to have paper to clean up.
How do they use it, like the 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 trustees or the jails will come out and pick up trash on the highway, you know, how do you?
They don't really.
That's that's a that's a completely different subject that, um, they're trying to get set up with the solid ways. That's who should be picking up trash, go to the ready.
Yeah, we've been trying to work with them on that, but part of that problem is is the drive, the distance, you get them over here and then you, an eight hour day, you've only got a few hours and load them up and go back. We're too far away.
Okay, now any more discussion on picking up the trash?
Make a motion with funds, twenty five hundred.
Do we have a second?
No second.
Thank you. Howard, Chad, okay, roll call vote, Janet?
Yeah.
Howard?
Yes.
Diane, yes, Todd, absent Chad.
Yes.
Okay. Clean up the road, do you, okay. Okay, item number ten, I'm sure we've done nine, we got both of those in. Item number ten, discussion consideration and possible action regarding the recruitment of three volunteer committee members to serve on the roads committee. The discussion is we had committees with residents on all of our committees except for roads, and we dumped it all on Chad and Todd. Kind of in conjunction with Garber as the expert helper on that. Um, I would like to see some citizen participation with that like we had years ago. When they tried to just do it for two fifty nine, if you go.
Mm-hmm, yeah, with the uh, with the.
I don't know what it's about, yes, so.
I think that's very close.
I think roads are such a hot topic for Ho Chi Minh that we deserve to have a road committee for citizens, but
I make a motion, we have a road committee, that would include five people, two trustees and three citizens, right?
Well, that that's, so it should be regarding the recruitment of three.
Additional volunteer committee, because we already have two trustees on the board, so.
Okay, Janet makes a motion, do we have a second?
No second.
Do we have any more discussion? Um, roll call vote, Janet?
Yes.
Howard?
Yes.
Diane, yes, um, absent Chad?
Yes.
Okay. So we'll get that in a minute and just kind of advertise like we did the others.
Yeah, we're done, like the others.
Yeah, any anybody who's a who's a resident that wants to be on the road committee, and then we'll try to take those applications and get variety, you know, somebody who lives on the county road up here, someone who lives on private road up here, someone that lives on the interstate highway, and that's gonna be it. Okay, so we'll do some road committee work, I think that'll be this communication. Okay, any other new business? Hearing none, do we have a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion, we adjourn.
Janet, we have a second?
No second.
Do we have a roll call vote to adjourn?
Janet?
I make a motion, we adjourn. Uh, we have a second, Janet, yes, Howard? Can you adjourn to that one fifty seven?